Is not with us. And then also just sort of welcome everybody into this space we've not been able to hold a meeting here before and for a lot of you that have spent the past few days in Burlington, we know this building as mentioned. And so we just did want to mention that we're excited to, as a district, have permanent homes for some of our programs that were previously in this building. So for those of you that don't know, SLA, which was our good start program, is now permanent with Waterford Elementary School. That was seven hundred and eighty-five high school that was operated here was at the Lincoln Building where we used to work out of as well. And then finally, a project in Maine, which was highest level for the third generation, is now on a lower level here in space that was specifically designed for that programming as well. And so that's just an exciting announcement to be in this space. And also just want to give a couple of shout outs. One to Adam Janine, who built all the cabinetry that you see in this space, as well as the table that we're sitting at. And Adam, as you can see, does fine work and at a great price too. So not that I'm plugging Adam, but for our taxpayer community, he really did a fine job. And just to also note some things like the divider behind you, the wood on the wall behind us, the stone when you came in, those are all product left over from the Carter Middle School project. And so a great way to recycle those materials as well. I also just wanted to mention that if you hadn't heard, we experienced in our community a tragedy Friday night affected some families with a pretty, really just bad car accident. It brings me great pride to let you know that watching our community, specifically Burlington High School, as well as Fox River come together in support of those kids and the families that are impacted, means a great deal. So hopefully, your thoughts, your prayers can stay with them during this very challenging time for their families and the road of recovery that they have. Not to leave you on a sad note like that, I just wanted to also highlight kind of a bittersweet. We had a student that you may have heard of, Nate Reberg, who's a junior at the H S that was recently diagnosed with leukemia. And the school very quickly wanted to have a full display of orange on Friday night when we competed against Waterford and held our Wall of Fame recognition. But really, one of the highlights is the sort of respect and love of a neighbor. We're very competitive with Waterford, of course, and yet their students and their coaches all showed up in orange in support of what was going on. And so that kind of classy relationship with the neighboring community is always fun to recognize as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that we did receive for tonight, a report from I C S at about five thirty. We did post that to board docs and it is going to be on our website if it's not already. So if after tonight, you want to dig in further or have questions following the report, that's going to be available as well. So thank you for the opportunity to share those couple.
You're welcome. Thanks for sharing. Steve, are you going to lead the discussion?
I will do that. So much like we did back in December when Dan Lozen presented the findings of the discipline audit, tonight we'll do a similar presentation where I'll just give a little bit of background as to how we got here. And then after the presentation, Jill Ossager will share a little bit about some of the work that we've been doing since. And so we are here tonight, want to highlight, what you can see on the screens is our three big goals for the district. We work with a focus on essential skills, which is really about our three learning goals, best practice in instruction specifically, and then universal access. Those have been our three big goals for approximately the last five years, and they continue to be. And of course, having an audit of our work aligns to all three of them quite closely. So that's, that's good news relative to our work. Also, just to remind us kind of how we ended up reaching out to have an audit done, this is similar to what we saw back in December, but just as a reminder, that there was a corrective action issued from the Department of Public Instruction. And you can see that there were four items that we were attending to. And really, what we're talking about tonight is item number two, about addressing a hostile environment that is present, the D P I believes is present here in the Burlington area school district. And so that is what led to the audit as well. So requirement number two specifically read that the district will work through a continuous improvement process of analyzing practices, policies, procedures based on recommendations. So the recommendations that were here tonight, those will be for the board's consideration, for the community to hear as well and provide feedback on. And then we see where that takes us in terms of next steps. And so without any further hesitation, want to pass it over to both Doctors Elise Fertura and Doctor Colleen Kapper, who are from I C S. And just give us a moment to get that zoom live and they'll begin their presentation.
Magic. Thanks so much. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and get us started and then I'll turn it over to Colleen. I'm Elise Fertura. I'm one of the co-founders of I C S Equity. And we'll talk a little bit more about this, but we've been doing this work for well over thirty years together. I'm Professor Emeritus from U W Milwaukee and was professor in educational administration. Prior to that, I was a Director of Student Services for fifteen years in three different districts in Wisconsin. So Colleen, do you want to go ahead and introduce yourself before I get started? It makes sense.
Sure. I'm Colleen Kapper. And again, as Elise said, I'm a co-founder of I C S with Elise. I'm Professor Emeritus from the University of Wisconsin Madison, Department of Educational Leadership and Policy Analysis. And my role there was preparing school leaders and superintendents for systems change work. And we're grateful for this opportunity.
So I'm going to go ahead and just share out a little bit, get us started in evaluation and then I will, this is my own as well, and it tells me I have all my bars, which I can't believe we're still talking about bars, but I am. At any rate, let me know if it's terribly bad. So, or Jill. At any rate, so I'm going to talk, just I'll do a quick introduction and then a little bit about our approach and then turn it over to Colleen to talk about the process and some of the selected quantitative data. And then I'll pick it up again around interviews, the interviews we did for the focus groups and then essential next steps. And then we'll open it up to Q and A. Our understanding is we have about thirty minutes and so we'll be as timely as possible. So just real quickly, as I said, Colleen and I have been doing this work for over thirty years and we've school districts and educators across the country since nineteen eighty-five, providing professional learning for school leadership teams, district leadership team, school board, community members, et cetera. And as far as evaluations, we can follow fifty evaluations from major school districts like the San Francisco Public to New Holstein in Wisconsin to other districts across the country. So, and we are, you just tell me that it's dragging a little bit, so hopefully it's okay. But so, you know, every evaluation that we do is unique to us. It's really unique to us and we're honored to and felt the responsibility, I must say, being asked to do an evaluation for Burlington. What we bring to that evaluation is a significant amount of experience from our previous devaluations and all the work we've been doing around equity for the past thirty years. We also don't do this work alone. And so we have a team of facilitators, I C S facilitators and coaches that work with us. And the Cieff Rogers was one of the facilitators that did some of our focus groups as well. So just a little bit about our approach. I think it's really important to know that our recommendations and how we actually even initiate any conversation with the school district is that this work is about advancing the learning for all students across all identities, across race, disability, language, social class, religion, gender, sexual, gender identity and other intersections. It's about that equity is about high quality teaching and learning for all kids. And that's the premise that we take within this approach and within all our work. We don't see this work as a zero sum game. It's not that some kids win and other kids lose out, right? That the responsibility of all school districts across this country is to raise the achievement of each and every learner. And so that's the lens that we use throughout this report and throughout our analysis. So I'm going to go ahead, turn this over to Colleen. If you want me to keep sharing or since I'm dragging, maybe you should.
Yeah, go ahead and share my screen. So can you see my slides? I just froze.
I was going to.
Can you hear me? I know you can hear what I'm saying.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Let's see if I can get myself out of here. Yeah, I'm stuck, so.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and share mine. And then do you want to go ahead and talk about the process and I'll just flip the slides?
Yeah, except that I'm like really completely, wait, I'm coming back now, I think, here. Now it looks like I'm back. Okay, let's see what we can do here. Okay.
But they're my slides. Do you want me to stop sharing?
Yeah, you're good. Now I think you can see my slides.
Yes, we can.
Ooh, okay. All right about that, we'll zoom. So just a little bit about our process. So as Elise said, we did conduct focus group interviews, across fifty-five focus groups and twenty-five individual interviews. We always ask in our focus groups if anyone wanted to contact us, when the one they could. So it was actually around about four hundred people that we talked with across the district, the community, the school board, administrators, et cetera. From each school, we did a separate focus group of general educators and student services people about, and so seven, eight individuals per group. As I said, district administration, district office staff, secretaries, building grounds, community members that were demographically representative of the district and students at the middle of high school who are also demographically representative. And then we had individual interviews with the principals, some community members, district administration and school board members as well. And we also just want to say upfront how grateful we are to Jill and the other district office staff who really helped in this process is incredible. Getting the focus groups together, getting us the equity audit data, it was fantastic, the organization of it all. And so how much we appreciate that in this work, we made our work a lot, a lot smoother process. So for each focus group, we just asked two key questions. So one is what do you think is working well in the district for every student? And the second question is what could be improved in the district for every student? So that was like, those are the two basic questions we asked everyone. When we got into, as you can see in the next slide, we asked them more detailed questions when we talked to the educators. So again, we asked what's working well, what could be improved. And then we asked the educators about the current structure for educating students with disabilities and what are the challenges of that structure? The current structure for students who are labeled as E L L, the English learners and the challenges to that structure? The current structure for educating students labeled as gifted and the challenges to that structure? We wanted to know what staff collaboration looked like across the district. And then we also asked what district policies, support and district policies that get in the way of all students achieving in the district. And then also with everyone, we got to the end of the interview, we just said, is there anything else you want to add about advancing the learning of all kids in the district? And so that was our structure of questions. Then we also, that was the qualitative part. Then for the numerical part in the data audit, we looked at data across demographics, across social class, race, disaggregated by race, by language, by disability, by gender. And then we looked at in programs of special ed, special education, gifted and honors, A P, our response intervention, we looked at achievement, we looked at math and literacy achievement, graduation rates, A C T. We also looked at truancy attendance and discipline. That, this all is in an Excel spreadsheet, a district level Excel spreadsheet. We got that to the district and the district coded in all the numbers for us, brought it back to us, and we did all the analysis and produced all the graphs, et cetera, that you'll see in the report. We also collected documents by key district policies and procedures like work policy, student family handbooks, discipline practices, and referral practices for at-risk, art response to intervention, gifted and special education. In our analysis, we analyzed all that data, you know, looking at key themes in the focus groups, we compared that data to the research on effective practices in education. And then we identified these essential next steps to the district to take. So you'll see in the, in our report, this is the, our table contents, we had our introduction, we're going to talk a little bit about the pupil non-discrimination law coming up here. You can see we divided it out in these different sections. The first section was more the quantitative, then we had the focus group for strengths and areas for growth. And then the last section are the essential best practices that we suggest. And then we summarize the next steps at the end of the document. So I just want to start out with, and this is in the report, in the very first pages, just what the law, Wisconsin state law says about there are responsive pupil non-discrimination law and how it applies to the Burlington school district. So I'm actually going to read it because I think it's important, it's just, it forms the context for this whole work. So the Wisconsin Public School District, the Burlington area school district remains legally bound to be in compliance with Wisconsin chapter one eighteen thirteen, the pupil non-discrimination law, and P I nine, Wisconsin administrative code. Under, under chapter one eighteen thirteen, no pupil may be excluded from a public school for many school activities or programs, or be denied any benefits or treated in a different manner because of sex, race, religion, national origin, including a student whose primary language is not English, ancestry, creed, pregnancy, cultural status, marital status, sexual orientation, physical disability, mental disability, emotional disability, learning disability. The law requires that each school district to submit an annual compliance report to the Department of Public Instruction, periodically conduct a self-evaluation to assess the pupil non-discrimination and quality of educational opportunity. The policy must apply to all areas of school operations, including school-sponsored programs and activities. Section nine zero three of the code illustrates the scope and breadth of the required district policies by identifying many of the areas subject to the non-discrimination policy. They include admission to classes or programs, rules of conduct and discipline, selection of instructional library, meeting materials and facilities, among others. Our pupil non-discrimination statute applies to all aspects of district operations and programs. But the law requires that the pupil non-discrimination policy and policies that the district adopts apply to all areas of the district. So just as a summary to form the context of the work that we did in the evaluation. So we just want to start out with, they're fundamentally absolutely were district strengths. And this is identified across the district, across community members, across for all perspectives of community members, across teachers and educators. These are really common. One was at first is district willingness to examine high quality teaching learning for all students, which improved that. They were excited about this evaluation. They were really excited, the district was engaged in it, excited about the opportunities that could come from this evaluation. And that was true again across nearly everyone that we talked with. A second one is just the district strength is just caring and supporting teachers who will work really, really hard to meet individual student needs. And again, parents, community members all said that that was a strength and they felt really proud of teachers and the really hard work in the district, really trying to meet student needs in all the ways that they could. A third really strong district strength was lots of options at the high school for different career paths, as well as extracurricular programs. What we really were impressed with was just like how all those paths were valued so that all the different pathways, it wasn't like some sort of hierarchy in that, some kids went to college, some kids to tech school, trade school, et cetera, but they were all valued in this, in the high school that has done a great job in supporting that, and the district has in supporting those options for students. Also common was a district process of the school boundaries with the district engagement. I think over the last year, and this is the first year, the district boundary changed where we made better representation of students across schools. And there's again positive support for that. There's also positive support for the process of how those decisions are made was a strength. Another strength that came up was the middle school work on discipline practices. There's some really strong new ideas there about how to dress up. Remember, these interviews were done at the start of the school year, we thought really provided a strong model for the rest of the district. So those are just five, you know, those are really five strong ones that really stood out. So we want to keep that in mind, these are the district strengths we want to be building on. We talk about the next steps to the district engagement. So the next piece I'm just going to talk about was just selected quantitative data. So we probably produced, I can't remember now, probably about thirty-five at least different graphs that are all in the report. We're just, we're just going over a few of those, just being mindful of our time. So I just started basically in this, in the districts, some basic demographics. So in the district, we have about sixteen point six percent of students labeled with disability, four point two percent of students are receiving English language services, thirty-six point three percent of students receiving free-吃的 lunch, and twenty point seven percent of students in color. Remember, these are the data the district got to us, probably over the late summer. So again, some of these data may have changed over this year, but that's the data at that point in time, that's what these data represent. So we look at students receiving free-吃的 lunch, over there in the left bar, you see the thirty-six point three percent of students are receiving free-吃的 lunch in the district. And so what we're going to be talking a little bit, two, two key points in this data. One is what we call representation, and we call proportional representation, to what extent the demographics of a student group in the district is represented across the district in different areas. And then the second key data area we're going to share is achievement data. And so I'll talk about both those, but those are the sort of, when you're looking through these slides, we talk about representation and then achievement. So students receiving free-吃的 lunch, again, thirty-six point three percent, we can see that students receiving free-吃的 lunch are over identified for special education. If it was proportionally represented, we would suspect about thirty-six point three percent of students receiving special ed to be receiving free-吃的 lunch. They can see they're over identified for special education, over identified for tier two and tier three interventions at fifty-five point four percent, under identified to being labeled as gifted at twenty point six percent, under identified advanced courses at the middle of high school at twenty-four point three percent. And the students who are attending alternative school setting, seventy-eight point seven percent of students receiving free-吃的 lunch. So I'm going to share, I'm sharing some data on free-吃的 lunch, just so you can sort of follow where we're going to go here. Then I'm going to share some data specific to race, and then I'll send data, a few data points specifically kids receiving English language services, and then a few data points of students identified with disability. So just so you know where we're going, and within each of those, a few on representation and a few on academics. So we look at district reading achievement and kids on free-吃的 lunch, which you're looking at here are in the, in the green bar are students who are middle to upper class, meaning that they're actually not receiving free-吃的 lunch, like that, that's what that means. And the students here in the gold bar, the orange bar, are students receiving free-吃的 lunch. So this is reading achievement. So if you look on the left side, these are students who are scoring basic or below basic, so they are not at grade level in reading. And this is for grades, this data set is for grades, students grades three through eights, just so you know where it comes from. So students who are middle to upper class, thirty-six point five percent are basic or below basic in reading. And then we see that students who are free-吃的 lunch, sixty-three point two percent are basic or below basic in reading. And then you see the sort of the inverse on the other side, for students who are advanced or proficient in reading, sixty point two percent are kids who are not receiving free- 吃的 lunch. And then we see a little more than a third of kids who are receiving free-吃的 lunch are proficient or advanced. I'm going to focus on that left side. I think what's important about this, and it goes with how we started this out tonight, is that in this school district, right now, even kids who are middle to affluent in your school district, they are not on free-吃的 lunch. More than a third are basic or below basic in reading. So that's what we're talking about, like this is what, so there is a gap. We see a gap between kids on free-吃的 lunch, much higher, so two thirds are not reading at grade level. And then we have a third that are middle and affluent who are not reading at grade level. Yes, there's a gap for sure. But I think what's important, what we think is important is that even with all the really good work going, even kids who are not on free-吃的 lunch, more than a third are are basic or below basic. So that's what I'm going to come back to, you know, this work, it actually is about all kids. It's not about one certain group of kids, we're going to do this for these kids over here, and sort of everyone else is doing fine. This is about sort of rethinking, how can we continue to improve our district across literally all kids in the district? And this is one example of that. We see the same in district math achievement. So I'm just going to focus on this left side. Students who are middle to upper class, twenty-seven point six percent are below basic in math, and this is grades three through eight. And then you have more than a third of kids who are receiving free-吃的 lunch are both below basic in math. So now we're going to, that was a little bit on free-吃的 lunch. I'm going to shift now to race. So when I look at students and demographic and district students, the staff racial demographics, you can see at this point in time, it's like a data, twenty point seven percent are students of color, are students of color in the district, but you can see staff of color in the district are two point six percent, certified staff of color one point two percent. And then we sort of made a note over here, what we thought was important, other students of color, fourteen point three percent of students in your district are Hispanic. So we have a fairly large Hispanic population, as you probably know. At the time, we got the data from the district in the summer, at that point in time, the district reported they didn't have any Hispanic staff. When we met with the district last week, they said that they, they do have a few Hispanic staff members now. And we'll be talking about in that a little bit about the importance of increasing the number of students of staff members of color, and especially of Hispanic or Latin in your school district. For students of color over identified for special education, you can see on this graph, students of color again represent twenty point seven, seven percent of students in the district, but twenty-five point eight percent of students labeled for special education. So students are over identified, yet and then when you disaggregate it, you have black students who represent one point six percent of students in the district, but two point eight percent of students labeled for special ed are over identified. Hispanic students are also over identified for special education, and your multiracial students are also over identified for special education. Then when you look at the other side, and you look at kids labeled gifted, if you look at the left bar, actually students who are white, you know, well represented in your gifted programs, advanced programs across the district. But again, when you look racially, you can see that black students are under identified as gifted, Hispanic students are under identified, multiracial are under identified. Overall, students of color are under identified as a group, as gifted in the district. This relates to your advanced placement courses. Again, you see on the left side, white students are well represented in your advanced courses at the, at the high school. But again, actually, in this example, black students are equally represented in your advanced placement courses at the high school, so that's a positive. You can see Hispanic students are far underrepresented in your advanced placement courses, multiracial students are not identified in your advanced courses. But overall, you can see students of color are under identified for advanced placement courses at the high school. Then we look at suspensions and discipline. So you have, over on the far left side, you have students who identify as students of color, again, twenty point seven percent in your district. But you see the kids receiving in-school suspensions are thirty-one percent, students of color, so students of color are over identified for your in-school suspensions. Out-of-school suspensions, actually, they are not over identified. So students of color are over identified for in-school, but not for out-of-school, they are not over identified. But when you disaggregate that data, you'll see that students who identify as black are very over identified for in-school suspensions and out-of-school suspensions, as you see your next data right there, for in-school and out-of-school suspensions, black students are far over identified. Same with students who identify as Hispanic are over identified in in-school and out-of-school suspensions. Then we just take a quick look at some achievement. When we look at racial, race again by achievement, I'm just going to drag your attention to the olive bar. So the olive bar again are kids who are basic or below basic by race, and this is in reading. So you have white students, forty-one point five percent are below basic or basic in reading, black students fifty-two, two point six percent basic or below, but again, that's the olive bar. Multiracial students, forty-four point nine percent are basic or below basic in reading, thirty-eight point nine percent of Asian students are basic or below basic, and seventy point four percent of Hispanic students are basic or below basic. Assuming that the Hispanic student achievement stood out to us. But again, when you look at process, I think what's important to know, yes, there are gaps. So yes, gaps between white students who are basic or below basic in reading, forty-one point five percent. You look at the gap, and then black students, even more black students by percentage are basic or below basic in reading. I think what's important to note again, come back to this though, that again, despite the hard work, good work for teachers and caring across the district, more than, you know, more than forty percent of your white students are basically below basic in reading. So again, as we think about the district reading system, what, you know, what is it about that that we can, that we want to improve? We actually see growth across all students in the district. And then we see the same, I won't go through the details on this, some of this, you'll see the same gaps in math. You see, if you look at the olive bar again, basic and below basic in math. White students, again, forty, nearly fifty percent, forty-five point three percent of white students, grades three to eight are basically below basic in math. And then again, you can see the gaps across when you look at just the olive bar. Um, again, it, it causes the question, what do we need to be doing differently in our math systems that all students can be doing better? And then this last piece is just, uh, math in terms of college readiness. So the district did an incredible job of getting an achievement data. I mean, it was thorough. So we had grades three through eight. They got its data at the high school as well. So this is the ACT eleven grade math assessment, and this is based on, uh, again, on math. Um, so, so it assesses whether kids are college ready in math at that grade level. And so, um, you can see fifty percent of Asian students have, have fifty are ready for college, fifty percent are not. You can see for black students, zero. So one hundred percent of black students who took that ACT eleven grade now are not, um, re- college ready. Ninety point three percent of Hispanic students, one hundred percent of multiracial students are not college ready. And then you have sixty-eight percent of your white students are not college ready. So again, like, okay, like, it's not just about one race or one group. This is about, uh, you know, this is really rethinking what we need to be doing again differently with our math system across the district. And I have just two more slides to set. One is around physical ELL and the other is special education. So these, these are students receiving ELL services. So you have, uh, point, four point two percent of your, um, students receiving ELL services. That's on your left side there. You can see students who are receiving ELL services are over identified for special ed. You can see they're over identified for spots intervention. Under identified is labeled gifted, under identified in advanced courses at your middle school. And you have zero students receiving ELL services who completed the AP exam at the high school. And then this last one is just related to kids with disabilities. You see also the same differences in achievement. Um, so you have, um, students without disabilities. You have forty-three point seven percent are below basic or below basic in math. But you also have, um, or actually forty-three point seven percent of students without disabilities, basic or below basic in math. But eighty-two point five percent of students with disabilities are, um, at basic or below basic in math. So again, despite some really hard work, really awesome work on access, you know, high expectations. Um, trying to do RTI in a better way, you can still see some really big gaps, um, for kids with disabilities. But again, coming back, even kids without an IEP, um, forty-three point seven percent are basic or below basic in math. So I'm going to turn it over to Elise, who will now, um, talk about the qualitative.
All right. And I realize, um, we are going through this very quickly and, um, it's a, you know, it's a hundred page report, if not more. And so in a half an hour, out of all fairness, um, we're, we're only doing an overview, right? So for the focus groups, and so there are two main data sections of the report. One was that, that quantitative part, right? What does, what does the actual data look like? The queen just did, um, a few, um, pointed slides. But then the next part is the qualitative part of, kind of what's the culture? What are people thinking? What's going on with the system? And so this falls under qualitative research, and those were, as we talked about, the questions that we asked. And so out of the four hundred interviews, so the four hundred people that we interviewed and all the focus groups, this was the, these are the themes that bubbled up from all of those interviews. And so we put the themes into five different, uh, primary themes with secondary themes underneath them. And so within the report, you will see it listed this way. And then within each secondary thing, you will see quotes from people within the district or community members or board members. But, um, knowing that, um, they're all anonymous and you, they should not be identifiable at all. But just really what people said, what do they think about it? So the five major areas are bullying, teasing and harassment, that that came up throughout all the interviews. Teaching and learning, district culture, community, and then educational structures. And so just a little bit on, um, bullying, teasing and harassment, it came up as rampant occurrences. It came up as students retaliated against for recording incidents. So much fear about if I say something to someone, it's not going to go well. Lack of district school response, and the feeling is even if I do say something, then no one's, no one's going to do anything about it. Lack of district school communicating the response of really thinking about what is the district doing proactively? And there are some things that are happening proactively that are not communicated. And so then it ends up, um, providing mixed messages. And then lack of staff training. In the end, people really wanted consistent systematic professional development in order for these, um, types of bullying, teasing and harassment not to occur, but also to interrupt inequities and to create high quality teaching and learning for all kids. And that was a, a primary theme from staff. Um, teaching and learning is really looking at, um, uh, is the curriculum identity relevant? Can all kids see themselves within the curriculum? Um, and the feedback from that was they cannot, um, but that staff wanted more information on how to better do that. Uh, collaboration across staff, uh, in order for kids not to be marginalized or segregated within the system. It means that our experts have to collaborate, our experts have to. So staff were asking for more ways of collaboration, very consistent, um, in order to continue to, to build those support networks, um, forward in, in order to have identity relevant instruction. And how do we co-create that? So we'll address all of these in the next steps. And again, uh, professional development came up. So again, just what can that look like under teaching and learning? And, uh, specific to collaboration instruction and curriculum. And then discipline, what does proactive discipline look like? So people were concerned about discipline, the inequity within the discipline. You can see what, um, Colleen talked about within the discipline as far as, um, some of those, um, really tangible inequities. And then looking at district culture, communication came up, um, significantly, but the other part was really follow-through. So, you know, our goal in this work is help the district get to, from point A to point B. Um, and, and what does, what can that look like? What can a systematic approach look like that is transparent and communicated? That has the achievement and, and proactive support around discipline for all kids from the center. And, um, and a consistent follow-through, that it's not a, a one-stop, um, shop thing where I go to one professional development, but then there's no follow-through or application for the classroom. And then district policy. So, um, staff were pretty unclear, um, and most focus group participants were really unclear of different district policies and what they look like and how they can be applied. And then community was around parent involvement and public relations. What does a really cohesive community, school, district look like? And how do we bring everyone together in that? As far as structures, um, many staff talked about different educational structures, um, that felt marginalizing across special ed, ELL, multi-level systems of support, advanced learners, social emotional learning and secondary programs. And so all of that is listed there, and I'm just being cognizant of the time. So all of that is in detail, um, within the report of, in general, representation of what different, um, focus group members talked about and why they became themes, um, throughout. So I want to just start with, so I'm going to talk just a little bit about the next steps. And as, um, as we shared earlier, that, you know, two thirds of this report is really the district data, right? It's the quantitative data and it's the qualitative data. One third of the report is next steps. Where do we go from here? We do think this is the most important part of the report. Um, there was a quote that's in the report that really, um, really guided our way, we have to say. It really set the stage. Uh, and one community member said this, hearing everyone's feedback about how great their experience has been and how there are so many great things about this community, I realized that not everyone has the same experiences that I do. Therefore, I want from the report to address, if there is something going on that creates obstacles or prevents people from having the same experience as my family and I have, had, we just need to fix it. And so that's the, uh, it's important for you to know going forward, that's kind of the spirit of the essential next steps going forward. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit just about how they're aligned and set up in the framework. And then, um, I'll talk about them. I'm not going to read them all. So I think there are, Jill probably knows this, I think they're about thirty-six. So I'm not going to read them all. Um, because I think we'd all have the deer in the headlight look by that, after that. But I also, we also want to make sure they're given opportunities for questions. So as far as the framework for high-quality teaching and learning, just a, in, in the framework, we're leaning into a really systematic, pragmatic approach for high-quality teaching and learning. So all kids learn more. So the thirty-two percent of kids that function under middle and high class that still are not reading at advanced and proficient need to be, right? At the same time, African-American Hispanic kids who are not reading are proficient need to be, right? So the, so the first goal is of this framework is that it's, it's systematic, it's pragmatic, and that it's connected to each other. It's all interrelated. And so it's not, um, so that we don't continue to perpetuate piecemeal. That we know in order to have a system that is actually meeting the needs for all learners, we have to be really systematic in our process. Um, and part of that is sharing out that focus on equity that everyone in the system, community members, board members, staff, all educators know the history of public ed. How did we get to the system we have? And why is it working for all our kids, right? And often we find that we're functioning in a reactionary kind of deficit-based system. And the deficit-based system holds all kids back. That's the bottom line. It holds all kids back. And so we want to really leverage a proactive system for all kids in a healthy way. But the first step of that is really knowing the history of public debt. Shift from deficit to asset, asset-based thinking and language. There were many conversations within focus groups that were really deficit-based language. I'm also known as microaggression, but anything we say that lifts me up and pushes somebody else down is, is really a microaggression, right? It perpetuates that inequity. Um, so really understanding how our language, um, defines how we think. And then it defines the structures that we create within our system, right, of how we respond to students. Um, continuing the growth mindset around identity development, that identity development across all identities, across all races, across, think about across gender, sexuality, right? So really going into kids that are experiencing poverty, but really doing some, um, pragmatic and systematic professional development around identity development. And then what does the research say? And so within the document, there's a significant amount of research of what, what a proactive system look, looks like that really dismantles practices and structure, structures that become inequitable. Um, and then, um, the other part of, of really leaning into your mission and statement and the work and the goal that you, that the district already has are developing principles of excellence of how are we going to get there? So, so the aspiration of a high-quality teaching and learning system. But the question is, what are those guiding principles that really operationalize that work? And so what does that look like? And most districts have about seven to ten really operational principles that say exactly what are we going to do? It's tangible. We can see it. It's not aspirational. It's what we're going to do to make sure that we have equitable, really how we see kids, what our structures look like, what curriculum looks like and what instruction looks like. And then, um, an annual, just conducting the equity audit, everything that Colleen just went over, conducting that on an annual basis to measure your growth. And measure, um, uh, just achievement of the impact of a real systematic approach going forward. Uh, and we would suggest that also happen. Um, so what we asked for was a district equity audit. We would also include a school-by-school equity audit as well, that schools can look at their own data in a way that they can look at proportional representation as well. Uh, and then really looking at, uh, as the conversation around collaboration is really important. Uh, and staff talked about opportunities, um, for collaboration, but that it wasn't structured and that they would really like to have more opportunities, uh, to actually collaborate. And so that the more they collaborate, the less kids receive pull-out instruction that often they learn less. They learn less when they're removed from the core of teaching and learning. So some of the conversation we have under transforming teaching and learning is the more kids that are, are removed from the classroom, the more they're removed from the classroom, the further behind they get, because the more we accommodate modified curriculum, the less information we're giving them. And then we assess them on information that we actually haven't taught them. So really looking at what does identity relevant teaching and learning look like for all kids under transforming teaching and learning? What does curriculum look like? Bringing into the conversation curriculum that represents all learners, that they can see themselves within that curriculum and that it's asset-based and proactive within the core of teaching and learning, which when we define the core of teaching and learning, it's tier one, um, general education. And we also made some, um, recommendations for discipline and behavior and put a couple attachments in of what do proactive discipline plans look like? That all staff are on the same page moving forward, so that it's really consistent, so kids achieve and learn more. And then really looking at students with more significant disabilities. Pulling this all together, and this is where the board comes in significantly, is around policy and funding. That aligning all human resource systems to your equity principles of excellence, leveraging funding to those equity principles of excellence. So the whole system is going forward in a really, um, proactive manner, um, lifting the achievement of all students. And so, and then also doing that cross-check with policy and procedures against those principles of excellence. At the top of this, you'll see institute and sustain a comprehensive anti-bullying, anti-harassment policy and practices. And that's significant. That has to come in right out of the gate. And so I'm just going to share that slide regarding it. Um, that it's going to be really important to institute and sustain a comprehensive anti-bullying, anti-harassment policy prior to any essential next step within the district. So really thinking about, um, exactly adopting it, making it transparent and clear. We talked about really looking at Wisconsin Department of Public, excuse me, and public instruction and the relevant federal law. Inform all students, families and community members, provide intensive training so that everyone knows. So this is the role and responsibility of all school districts. So it's not, this really isn't, to us, it's, it's actually not negotiable, right? This isn't negotiable. In order to actually lift the achievement of all kids and provide equitable system, this has to be front and center and first and completed first. So, and then develop that robust data system that tracks the details as far as complaints and resolutions, but having a response system in place and so that when kids do not feel like there's going to be retaliation or no one's going to respond. Um, and so, and that, um, it informs our parents, students and community about the resolutions. And so this, under the communication too, uh, that many people talked about the lack of community um, going forward. So then you'll see just the list of all the essential next steps that I just did a really brief overview. So I'm not going to go through them now. And given the time, we're right at, um, we're actually at forty minutes. We started at seven oh nine, and so it's seven forty-nine right now. So I'm going to go ahead and stop there, and then we'll open this up for Q and A. I'll stop sharing my slides.
Any board members have questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was wondering how you decided who was the upper class and regular, you know, average when you or that are you talking about money? Are you talking, what are you, education backgrounds? What are you talking about for the parents?
That's a good question. It was, um, started out by, um, kids who received free use price lunch at school and then kids who did not receive free use price lunch at school. The kids who received free, who apply to receive free use price lunch at school. Um, kids who did not receive free use price school, we identify as, as either middle or upper class. Knowing that there's some fuzziness there, because we know that families, there are plenty of families who have qualified for free use price lunch, but actually don't apply. But that's, uh, that's how we, that, you know, the district just got us the numbers on free use price lunch, and then we did the analysis based on that. But that's, uh, that's how we, that, you know, the district just got us the numbers on free reduced-price lunch, and then we did the analysis based on that. And that's, just so you know, like, that's DPI collects that. That's a very common um DPI. The Department of Public Instruction calls it economically disadvantaged. And that's how they measure it, is my kids on free reduced-price lunch. So if you go to the DPI website right now, you can pull up your school district, and it would show similar data. And it would show economically disadvantaged, and we compare, you know, achievement accepted by that.
Other board members, questions? I have one. I mean, you touched on at the end, uh, the anti-bullying, anti-harassment policies and practices. And I haven't had a chance to dive into the practices yet, but just curious on it, was there specific feedback on our policies? We do have an anti-bullying and anti-harassment policy in our district. Are they deficient in some way that you, you see, or?
The one thing is that people didn't know about the policy. They didn't understand what the policy was. So like, there might be a policy. Um, but like the actual implementing that in practice is what was missing.
Anyone else in the board? Any questions?
Yeah, I don't know what kind of questions you're expecting. We've got this at five thirty, hundred pages.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point here.
Presentation was forty minutes.
Yeah.
I was just saying, I wouldn't think we would need another session to ask questions, because there's a lot to go through here yet before we can digest it.
Those are good points, too, you know, doctors, uh, Catherine, Fertura, I think. We're gonna make time to go through the report, uh, just taking the information we got. There's a lot to digest, and then uh circle back to you with questions, I think, on the audit.
Absolutely. We certainly understand.
Anything else?
Well, one question. Is this the report as it stands, or will there be additions to this?
It's the report as it stands. It's official final report. We, yeah.
Will we get a copy of the presentation that you gave tonight?
Yeah, we sent that to Jill.
Okay, well, thanks for presenting tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity. And again, we're happy to set up a follow-up meeting if you have um questions as you go through the report. We know it's um long. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
That being our only other, only item on the agenda tonight, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, so um, the question was asked about the presentation. We did give that fifteen twenty minutes before. So we'll post that on our website as well, so that you have this in your, your own screenshots, what have you. Um, and, and to the others earlier point, certainly if the board schedules another meeting where they're, you know, discussing this further after having some time to digest, because it is a lot, certainly that would be advertised as well. And just a couple of slides to finish kind of the, the bookend, uh, really quick with Jill, and then.
I think what Jill, I'm wondering, you know, in the review that we did for the equity audit was um the years, the twenty twenty nineteen, twenty school year. So they did want the years that really related to the COVID timeframe. Um, so it was, it was getting off that data prior to. Uh, so we also wanted to know the topic about like, what have we been doing um since the, since the data has been collected? So a few changes, which one of them that was, was big and part of the why for the elementary uh, in the concrete was to ensure that our schools were uh better proportionally represented uh across the district. While our, sixty percent of students were free reduced-price students in, in one building and really making sure that we're being more equitable across the whole system, especially FBI, to ensure that there is more equity when it comes to the P L services, special ed services. And I'm just ensuring that we really are, are making it as thorough, genuine as possible um across all separate elementary schools. The second piece that um really just kind of got underway here uh in January of, this month, January, is the data and systems analyst. So as a district, we haven't formally had a data and system analyst within the district. So we haven't had a formal way to analyze our data in a really systemic way. So we have um also spent uh time working to find a platform that will work best for us in order to track our data. So that is something that uh we're working on. Andy Smet has been hired as our data and system analyst and has been doing a great job so far. She is um really, really uh think into it. She really likes it. She's very um, very, very we really pose attention to every minute detail. Uh, we are going through our district data together, and she was involved by, by two students, right? So uh, what the data she was looking at versus the data at Y dash. So really important to, to pay attention to the details. We really appreciate that. We will be ready to start to deal with the new one of those systems and try to track this from now. Our assistant principals in the district work on our student handbooks. They align that with the NEOLA handbooks. So NEOLA does supply student handbooks that are made uh through NEOLA. And then we have the ability to kind of embed our own uh spin on them and/or practices that we utilize within the district. So our assistant principals have been working on those and have updated them. We shared that kind of, we really work to refine our district codes. There are over ninety-nine different codes that were being used. Ensuring codes down to fourteen. Uh, ninety-nine can be really difficult to track, especially when some of them really overlap and were very similar to each other. Uh, so that will make it a bit easier for us to track as well. Uh, referral entry was something we talked about too, more so from the lens of, and the student note tracking. Um, those two components of ensuring that we're not just uh tracking what happens to the perpetrator, but also ensuring that we're, you know, keeping notes with, with the victims. So that we do have a better ability to, you know, if, if Roseanne continues to be, if being harassed or picked on by the student student, we have that in Roseanne's file and within the system and not just the perpetrator. So that is helping us in that regard. And then when it comes to teaching and learning, uh, one component that we brought forward to the board was in relation to the extra funds and trying to align some of that work with uh ensuring that we have more equitable structures. A lot of that uh comes through the instructional coaches that we would like to uh implement and utilize within the district. So there's a, as you heard, there's, there's work to when it comes to teaching and learning. And one way to go about really ensuring that our structure and our system is aligned, that we're supporting our teachers with the right strategies and, and skills to be used in the classroom, is to provide coaching. Um, so right now, our principals are only instructional coaches in the building. But being able to really branch out and utilize more staff for that, um, to really bring up our construction across the district and desire. Uh, we also have one of the positions there too, is the ability to use an interpreter, that is the district interpreter for the district. Uh, also in E L position, um, support within library services, and then also our student services, which is background services that relate to county, school sites, and also social workers. So really trying to elevate all of those programs and try to see here a lot of our system and structure components in these next two years. So that once the extra funds are no longer available, that we have really revamped and been able to get a lot of the structure. Uh, another component that is used with teaching and learning is what we call community circle time and advisory lessons. So community circle time is our program that is used more so at the elementary level, so key through five classrooms. They have about twenty minutes of time for them to be able to sit with their class of students and be able to talk through uh issues that might be arising within school day, um, that would relate to bullying or harassment, uh, ensuring that we honor each other's differences, see each other's differences, and accept goals. So that's what community circle is about. Advisory lessons are at the secondary levels, in middle school and high school. Same kind of uh idea there as well, uh, and also infusing in uh just the character traits we have as well. When it comes to grading practices, we've been really working on uh one of our big three, as Steve had mentioned, is our essential skill work. So that's really working to ensure that we are moving in the direction where it's all about ensuring all students through proficiency, which is meaning grade-level standards. Um, and if they aren't, like, what do we do about that? What kind of strategy groups or interventions are we gonna put in place? Um, and really working to ensure grading, our grading system is not being looked at in, in a punitive way, um, but more so as an informative way to really help students grow um and learn and, and progress toward their achievement. Skill groups is something that we had originated and found to be really beneficial at the middle school, where we use the uh time of day that was called I-ten. And we use our I-ready data to really be able to inform uh our student instructional groupings in order to support around standards. So really saw the benefit of that at the middle school level and how much that assisted us with our growth and achievement. Uh, so really put into practice that we will use skill groups on K eight. So this is the first year the elementary schools also have infused the use of a skill group time. And that is focusing around reading and math. That is a tier-one component. Also, tier-one, when they use the term tier-one, tier-three, tier-one is talking about all students. So this is uh, super time is for all, all students to ensure that we're meeting them for where they're at and, and ensuring that we're helping all students grow and achieve. The last one on here that relates to teaching and learning is called the expand, uh, is to expand our listening library. So last year, I don't know if you recall or not, but kind of Dinan had presented in relation to a pilot where each counselor was paired with a elementary teacher, and they were using books through the Jewish Federation. It was a free program for them to be able to incorporate books that talked about differences and accepting each other. Um, and they're all children's books, and lessons been along with those. So we've been working on, on expanding that to ensure it's not just a pilot within um a few classrooms in the district, but to ensure that it's something that we can start to infuse in all the high classrooms. Um, and that's, that's been slowly taking place this year. A few other um things that we've been working on is in relation to student and parents and community involvement. And with the students, we have shared that uh we do have shared club training at the middle school and high school. And that is really to ensure that we're providing voice to our students who are of color and to sure, ensure that they have a place um to voice any concerns and or feeling power also to use their voice. We also utilized a microaggression survey last year, which was for grades five through twelve. We've used that with students, and we've also used it for some professional development in our staff, um, pre-K through twelve. And then this is, the last one, is something that's heard out of the fall and some concerns and issues that were arriving within our, our sports teams. So Eric Fitzroy and our coaches have been working together across the conference in order to hold a sportsmanship conference with the athletic directors, coaches, and some athletes in order to really uh start to have conversation on how do we conduct ourselves in a, um, in a manner where we are uh, we are treating each other with more dignity and respect and really holding ourselves to that. And if you have teammates that are not, um, you know, how do we stand up to that and not just be a bystander and really work together to raise up the entire conference when it comes to our sportsmanship? So that's gonna happen on February ninth. And then within our staff, some trainings that have been taking place, and when they talk about professional development, these are all things that have taken place since the audit leader would have been selected. So uh, we did have fifty different uh staff members in the district participate in a diversity, equity, and inclusion training with King and Granger. It was a series of trainings um over the course of last year. We also administratively, all administrators participated in the cultural responsive practices uh training. We had the unconscious bias, Reggie Jackson came in to talk with all of our staff. We also offered a evening um timeframe for him to talk with community members as well. Dr. Thompson has come in to talk about faces, which is in relation to trauma from here and understanding the trauma side of what students may be experiencing and how that can affect them at school. The National Equity Project is one that we've been working with in February each of the last two years. Um, and that one is, is heavily involved here with our team. And they, we have a group of teachers, students, administrators. They're all working with the National Equity Project on a fairly regular basis. Uh, they also have coaches that are meeting with Steve and I uh out every other week. And then also teams and coaching with some of our principals as well. Within the special ed realm of things, we've been really working on um M C S S, multiple-tiered system of support. And then state now changed it to equitable, multiple levels of systems and support. I said it out like a lot of times. So um, that is just the same thing. They just uh brought in that equity piece. So really focusing on ensuring that we are, are really starting to work towards changing our practices when it comes to specialized. You really notice it in our data that it is an area where our specialized students are, are not growing at the rate that we would like to see. Um, so another area that that relates to is the specialty design instruction. One in the I E P, where the goals that we're setting, and how are we ensuring that we're teaching into those goals in a very specific way with our specialized teachers? Um, and ensuring that we're, we, we were a model of full teaching, and we are really wanting to evolve into more of that helping to serve people teach, which um Colleen and Colleen were referring to. And the last one with professional development that we've been working on is with restorative practices. That is really thinking differently about discipline and ensuring that we really work to literally do what it says, is to restore the relationship within students and be able to ensure that if harm was, was caused, that we really repair that harm. We help kids learn how to, to do that within, within a group and be able to understand that maybe things that I have said, how that has impacted um others, right? That is impact versus intent, um, and really helping students work through that. So these are some of the things that um we're working on uh in relation to equity um in the district. The last thing that uh felt it would be important to bring up, Steve, you want me to, or you?
I'm happy to.
Okay, so hand this one over to Steve um in relation to how we're also working to really involve the community at the same time.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the comments from Jill, kind of summarizing some of the work that we've been doing, you know, in the last year to eighteen months, for sure. Uh, I think additionally, you know, it's hard to try to gather, you know, a list of things that are going on. Uh, because as you listen to the report from I C S, uh, it, it first kind of just doesn't feel good, feels like it hits you. Um, and you have to kind of be able to take that moment to step away. Um, but nevertheless, um, we did want to mention that while we've got um some student clubs at the secondary level in particular, that are having conversations about kids and their experience at schools, uh, we are also uh inviting parents at each school building to begin to engage more in terms of the dialogue back and forth that families are having um regarding their experience in schools. And then the next sort of layer of that, to build upon that, would be to have a larger community type of conversation. And so we don't, we're, we're learning as we go. Don't exactly know what that's gonna look like, but met with a very dedicated group of community, families, students uh that held an initial planning meeting and feel like we're anxious and ready to hold a community-type uh event. that held an initial planning meeting and feel like we're anxious and ready to hold a community type event. And you know, on February second, we're not exactly sure what to call it. Maybe it's kind of town hall-ish, maybe it's a coming together, but we're feeling like the purpose is really to be able to be collaborative in community for healing and progress. And so you can define that however you want. But there's probably no, no doubt in people's minds that it's been a rough run in terms of people disagreeing about things and, you know, having various different points of view about how we should go about our business. And hopefully this is the beginning of an opportunity to say, well, the thing that does unite us is kids and the work that we do on behalf of our community. And so hopefully you're able to come on out on February second at six thirty in the Carter Commons. We expect a pretty sizable group and hopefully if you're able to join us on that night, you'll be ready and willing to engage in some conversations and dialogue. We intend to try to have that be in some small group conversations so that we can manage having a, you know, a large group of folks with us that night. And based on how that goes, we'll see what comes next as we go through that journey. So appreciate your opportunity to not only be here tonight to follow sort of in this journey with us, but potentially engage come February second.
Excellent. Anything else, Jill? I apologize for not following the slideshow before and trying to adjourn the meeting early. But I think we're at that point though, in a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made in second and any discussion? Hearing none. Hall and bay.
All right, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna find the previous meeting that kind of set this whole thing off. So it's been over a year, basically for those that are lurking, to give you guys some background on this. So this is a very racist town in Wisconsin. I mean, it's publicly, it's very openly racist, like they don't give a fuck. And there was a, uh, there was a little black girl that was thrown down the stairs. She was spit on, kicked. They've burned the N-word in like the grass and the wood chips. There's been some issues at football games. Things like that, so. Do I have this whole thing? Well, I wonder if this is one of. So this is an event that I streamed on Facebook. Let me see if I uploaded the whole. Oh yeah, here we go. Um, there's some clips down like. Down towards the, uh, the very start of the page, like when videos first started popping up and whatever. But anyway, this is the, this is the full meeting. I'm not going to play the full meeting. I'm just gonna kind of play some stuff that, that happened so you guys get an idea. So anyway, the situation that happened with this little girl, it, it really exposed what has been going on in this community and what specifically has been going on at, at this school. One of the protest groups out here in Milwaukee that I film, TPR stands for the People's Revolution. So they have some members of, of that group that, um, you know, families go to this school. And several, several, several TPR members showed up to show support. So essentially what you're kind of going to witness in this video is that they, beginning of this meeting, they open it up to public comments. And you know, a lot of people are, there's opposing viewpoints here. And essentially, once this is all done, the school board is just like, okay, great. Now let's talk about this school dance and decorations. Uh, there's no like, hey, thank you everybody for the comments, you know, even like for both sides. Thank you for the comments, you know, this has been eye opening, we'll take this into consideration. You know, we heard everybody, we value what you guys said, like there was none of that said. So TPR kind of responds with, you know, did you hear us? That gets ignored. And, uh, and then it turns into a full-on protest. While some of the people of color that were speaking, some of these very openly racist people. You know, and then obviously there's, there's some people here that, you know, they're, it's like we've seen in all these protests and all these things where, you know, you, you have some people that are kind of stuck in their ways. They're not really getting it, that they're not really getting the, you know, um, the like white fragility. They're not, they're not seeing certain things as being racist, you know, we're, you were dealing with that too. So a lot of like very ignorant things that are being said. This group that's, that's in front of me to the left of the screen, um, that, that's wearing all red. So I'm probably, I don't know, ten feet from these people. And I can kind of hear what, what's being said. It's not really picking up on the microphone. But like these people were absolutely horrible. Some of the comments that were being said, this is one of the hardest, one of the hardest things that I had to film. There was some other media, like there was mainstream media that was out here. And then some other independents that, uh, that also filmed TPR. And, and you know, we looked at each other. And the police end up getting involved. Uh, the police assaulted one of the TPR members. That turned into a fucking big old scuffle outside. It's pretty crazy, so.
First of all, I wanted to thank you board members. I know this has been a crazy year for you. If you could adjust your agenda next year to have less big things like COVID, like this stuff, like everything. I think it would really make a lot more sense. But anyway, I wanted to thank you for being here. I grew up in Chicago in the nineteen sixties. I went to an all-white high school. It was the seventy-two-hundred students. My freshman class had twenty-two-hundred students. It was a very mixed class or very mixed school. The time when I was there was in the nineteen sixties, lots of racial tension. If you don't know anything about Chicago in the nineteen sixties, we had loads of problems. Many days, there was hundreds of police officers on campus. Racism was a problem then. I'm sure it's a problem now. I don't think this is a question tonight, I hope, of dealing with racism, but how to deal with it. I have three students who went through school here in Burlington. I'm a retired teacher myself. I taught for three to four years, high school science. And I also taught at the college level. I've written much curriculum. I know something about what it's like to teach curriculum to teachers and to write curriculum. I've done it actually overseas in Sierra Leone, um, multiple times, written with teachers. So I know something about teaching curriculum, writing curriculum. I'm not saying that to brag, but just to know, let you know, I know something about what's involved in it. And it is a very difficult task. And, um, I think that it's important to have curriculum, given all of the stuff that's going on with your teachers right now between COVID, hybrid school, online, all of that stuff. You're not going to ask them to develop meaningful curriculum without major pitfalls that you will all have to deal with as you've already had to deal with in terms of what you give them. I would strongly urge you though, strongly urge you not to incorporate the curriculum that's produced by Black Lives Matter organizations. Now, that is not to say I am not concerned about racism. That is not to say that I don't see issues that need to be dealt with. The question is not Black Lives Matter versus nothing, it's what will you use? And I would strongly urge you to not use curriculum from Black Lives Matter. I should tell you one other thing. You're already teaching a lot about racism and actually perpetrating, perpetrating it in your schools. You've been teaching from a book, all of your classes in this school that have been teaching from a book. Here's the title of the book, "The Preservation of Favorite Races in the Struggle for Life." That, the ideas embodied in this book are in all of your textbooks in biology and earth science in this school district and for that matter throughout the country. The book has another title and the author's name, that is, for you to take ten seconds to do this all the way. All I would say then, the title of the book is "Merging of Species." And the author's name is obviously Charles Darwin. I would encourage you strongly to reconsider using Black Lives Matter material. It is by an organization that is not intent on dealing with racism, but dealing with overthrowing this country. So I would strongly urge you to reconsider that.
Amen.
All right, Robert Jensen is next. Robert?
So I'm like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause it here for a sec too. So like the other thing, like there's some people that are in the kind of back here. Like they were bringing like all lives matter signs, they were bringing back the blue signs. Now, nobody knew that all these TPR people were showing up. So these guys were all set and ready and prepared with their kind of counter protest, you know, racist fucking rhetoric shit.
So what got me here in the first place was a quote, I'm gonna share that quote. Why would parents get so angry about their children learning how to draw with the lines of black and brown paint? Well, continues to me, is even more reason why the district needs to take action. That's a study about baseball, Fox Six going to Memphis, to Louisiana. Carvajal, I apologize for my butchered last name. However, it has nothing to do with learning the value of black or brown or any of the light. It's the introduction of a curriculum from an ideological or political movement. Not to mention deeply flawed with admissions and facts that are based, perceived solely from an ideological viewpoint. Now, we're not saying like the gentleman before me, that black lives don't matter. We're saying that black lives matter incorporated should not be introduced into a curriculum.
Enjoy unlimited DDR storage and never worry about hitting you.
For that matter, from an article from New York Post, Black Lives Matter co-founder Patrice Cullors, or Cullers, or our name, I apologize, said in a video from 2015 that her and her co-organizers are, quote, "trained Marxists." Making clear their role is an ideological foundation according to that. She is also a protege of Eric Mann, a former agitator of the Leather Underground domestic terror organization. Spent years absorbing his Marxist, Leninist ideologies and shaped her worldview. The, and I quote again, "The first thing I think is what we actually have is an ideological frame. Myself and Alicia, in particular, are trained organizers, according to Cullors, referring to the BLM co-founder Alicia Garza." Again, quote, "We are trained Marxists. We are super versed on a sort of ideological theories. And I think that what we really tried to do is build a movement that could be utilized by many, many black folk." She said in an interview with Jared Ball of Real News Network. Well, promoting her book, "When They Call You a Terrorist: A Black Lives Matter Memoir," in 2018, she also described her introduction and support to the Marxist ideology. She described to Democracy Now!, PBS one.
What's this here? Where, where's this all coming from here?
I'm, I'm, I just told you.
Not you, no, we're talking about.
Well, he's gonna quote something that's in reference to something.
Time is being honest, I hope.
We have to stop. One person at a time speaks. I'm not saying anything, am I?
I'm not going to give up to interrogation factors. I will continue regardless. Well, promoting her book, "When They Call You a Terrorist: A Black Lives Memoir", I haven't today, all right, to Democracy Now!, she became a trained organizer with the Labor Community Strategic Center, which she called her first political home under the membership, or mentorship, I apologize, of Mann. Eric Mann, its director, also the center of labor community strategic system.
All right, so either I mean, I mean, you're kind of, you're kind of getting the idea there. Let me, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna load up just a couple of clips. And then I'll, I'll jump to the, the juicy stuff. This was, you know, like just standing there, listening to it. I mean, it was just, it was fucking awful. And it, it went on for a while and, you know, both sides are coming up talking. And I mean, and it was extremely, extremely disruptive. And it's, you know, it's the same, it's the same rhetoric that's been going around and things taken out of context and people, you know, being afraid and freaking out over what they don't understand. You know, whatever. Yeah, it was just, it was very difficult to listen to.
Because many others who feel as I do are afraid to speak out because they own businesses in the community, have children in school, simply don't watch the day as racist simply for speaking out. I've lived my entire life, fifty-seven years in this community and went through the Burlington schools. My kids went through these schools. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen and guiding the potential introduction of a curriculum that paints our country and its boundaries as racist. Yes, our history is one of slavery and racism. It is fair to teach that. Our history is also one that had white slaves. It is also one that.
Keep going.
It is also one that had a country go toward the end slavery. A history where many people, black and white, gave their lives to end slavery. And a political party rose up on the issue of ending slavery, the Republican Party. Burlington has a proud history of taking part in the Underground Railroad. Again, local folk fought to end slavery. Our country is one of opportunity. People from around the world, white and people of color, are coming here because of the opportunity. You don't see caravans of Americans traveling to Mexico or Central America for opportunity. Americans aren't fleeing in boats to Cuba. Americans are, aren't fleeing to Russia or China, quite the opposite. This is our history.
That is the realism.
White supremacy's history.
Silent.
I'm in favor of anti-racist policies and an anti-racist curriculum that is jointly developed by the Burlington School Board and the broader community. A curriculum such as Critical Race Theory or the sixteen ninety project that Phil mentioned earlier, that teaches that this country is founded on white supremacy and society is inherently racist, should have no place in our schools. Teach that racism exists. Racism is wrong, but also teach our kids they live in the greatest country on earth. With the opportunity of racism.
If you're white, sure. Sure, if you're white.
Let me share, my sister-in-law. My sister-in-law came here as a seventeen-year-old girl from Kenya. She didn't have family in the States. She might know from Kenya, Kenya's an African.
All right, so there's, there's this fool and I don't know if you heard me there in the background. That, that's actually from the event. I'm like, I can't fucking listen to this. It was, I mean, it was really bad.
I moved to this community because I wanted to raise my kids here. And this town needs to just get that times are changing. Your white world is gone. We need to welcome people of all different races, religion. And it's over. The white world. And it's over, the white world needs to get a grip and we're all gonna be living in this world except it.
See, and then this fuck in the background is like, did you say all? Did you say all? Let me, let me take this opportunity to hold up my fucking All Lives Matter fucking sign, scumbag fuck. So then this is the football coach.
Probably All Lives Matter. Um, of course All Lives Matter, but, well, that's fine. But what you're doing with the All Lives Matter is there's desperate people behind you. They started something to make their life better. And instead of saying, why do black lives matter, why are they here? You took something to diminish what they are. But what you're doing is you're diminishing what they're going for.
As soon as you say but? But?
It's okay, he wants, it's okay. He wants to say but.
Hold on, is it when you say but, you've created a separation of but?
Wait, hold on, what's that?
As soon as you say but, you've created a separation with the asking of like, but?
So, you're not... So, All Lives Matter came out of people who are desperate, desperate for a better life.
Is it really was better, right?
Which we all were, right? We're all desperate for a better life.
Is you, is you us?
Well, now, listen, listen, I listen to you. Everybody here is desperate for a better life, for ourselves and for our children. So, you, I've coached many teams throughout my life in soccer. A lot of you guys know me, I coached soccer, I coached volleyball. And what I've learned through coaching kids is their story. Like, everybody has a different story. And I'm so fortunate to have coached so many kids that have learned their stories because then I can, I can relate to them. But what you're, what you're doing right now is you're saying that their story doesn't matter because it's not that, it's not that All Lives Don't Matter, because they do. But when you stand there and you do that, you're in, you're complaining to these people behind you and that's why we're out of control. If you guys think that racism isn't real, we're wrong. I went to my father and, to a person, the person I respect, I thought he was...
So this poor coach is like trying to talk sense into the community that he works in and he, these fucking parents of, of children that he's taught. And they don't, they don't even fucking respect him.
Tim Janice? Last call? Okay. Tim Janice? Okay, Arielle Cox?
I'm over here.
Okay.
Um, so, what I've heard from both sides is that we need a curriculum that teaches all of our children to love and respect everyone, no matter who they are. We can all agree on that, right? That's, that's what you want, you want children to learn how to be good people. Unfortunately, learning can be painful when you have lived an entire life and you've never had to examine the life of someone else. Just because you don't see an issue doesn't mean it isn't there. Right? Just because you've never experienced it doesn't mean that there is an entire component of our society that doesn't get the same privileges and rights as the rest of us. And that's wrong. And children see that. Children see it. They see the truth that you don't. And they ask questions. Young children ask questions. I work with children starting at age two. And they ask questions and they want to know and they deserve the truth. Just because our country's history is painful doesn't mean we can't talk about it with candor.
So she makes, you know, a lot of good points and then again, it's back and forth. It's all this, this push-pull. Um, and, you know, there, there ended up being a teacher out here as well that got suspended, uh, a lot of media coverage, um, because she ended up... These kids, like this lady is talking about here, these young children were asking questions to their teacher about the protests and why are these people out here, you know, yelling and, you know, why are there fires happening? Why is, you know, all this, all this stuff going on in, in the streets and on the news everywhere and all? They're asking these questions and the response that, you know, the teacher was getting is that, "My mommy and daddy won't tell me." And they genuinely wanted to know what in the hell was going on. So the teacher started talking to them about Black Lives Matter and why they're in the streets and all that. And she got into a lot of shit for that. So, um, so yeah, this is all going on. So like people are just being, that's that fucking guy again. People are just being rude and ignorant. This dude, so this is like thirty-three minutes, thirty-nine seconds into the video. This dude that gets up and speaks, he was a student at the school. Um, he went to the school for many years. He talked about a lot of racist stuff and shit that he had to go through. And they, they talked shit to him.
We allow the systems to stay in place.
Who's that lady? So now we're, now we're about to get into like, this is, this is about to turn.
On their computers, their phones can have a conversation about others who are speaking that are part of your channel who maybe did not feel like racism wasn't important enough. As you gentlemen did, you apparently respected us and you paid attention. Ma'am, you in the grade, I saw you constantly writing down on your computer, gentleman next to you, gentleman with the blue flag matters. That is clearly disrespectful and the conversation between you two was disrespectful. I'm just asking, that's a fair question to ask, is that going to be addressed?
I wonder if you're ready to go on to the next segment. Okay, so check yours, I'll be back next week, honey.
See, I don't know if you caught that either, but he then intentionally starts flashing that okay symbol that, you know, has been deemed as, um, you know, a white power symbol. He's intentionally, he's intentionally flashing that symbol. See if I can, see if I can get to it.
Blue flag matters? That is clearly disrespectful and the conversation between you two was disrespectful. I'm just asking, is that going to be addressed?
I wonder if you're ready to go on to the next segment. Okay, so check yours, I'll be back next week, honey. Any more correspondence? Anything you wanna say? Anyone wanna answer the question right now?
I'd just wanna say that, uh, last Wednesday, uh, Steve and I attended the induction into the, um, National Honor Society at the high school. It was very, very nice, got to visit with a lot of parents. Uh, there were some absent, of course, because of COVID and so forth, but, uh, very, very nice. And I liked the way Jim was so very, so healthy.
Was that right after the last hour was starting the N-word at the VHS football game?
Okay, that was true. It was very nice. Ooh, I am bringing my drums next week!
Okay, uh, not many else. Would anybody else wanna say anything afterward? Alright, then we're gonna move on to the Wisconsin School Board Association Adderall Recognition. River DeJade?
Before I start this, I will address the comment because, uh, it was directly aimed at me. And I just would like to say, I was just looking to take notes. Just listening to take notes. So it's not, was, was not meant to be disrespectful, uh, specifically so that I could keep track of kind of what the general commentary was.
What about Roseanne or somebody saying, "I'm sorry for what you all experienced." The more it hears you, what about acknowledging what you all just heard? You are just moving right on to the next agenda. I admit that you didn't just hear an hour of the racism.
I'd like to mention the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, the Adderall Recognition.
Here's your boyfriend, Gigi. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda turn this, turn this down because it's obviously super fucking loud. So now they, you know, they, they shut the, they shut the whole meeting down. And then, uh, this lady here. So this lady here, her name's Adrienne Melby. She's, uh, she's the one that organized We the Parents. Um, she, she was sitting there bragging on social media about how these kids were fucking with this little black girl. Um, and she's sitting here like recording with her phone. Somehow, maybe or maybe not, the phone got smacked out of her hand. Um, and, uh, then she's like, she sits here and she cries and it's all, "I'm a victim." And then she gets on social media and she starts fucking with these people. Um, she, she's a horrible fucking, horrible fucking person. But this little black girl ends up coming up, trying to talk to her and explain to her what's going on. That's my girl right there. So this girl here on the left on the, with the, with the white, this is the, this is the girl. And, um, yeah, so this ends up just getting fucking insane. Um, and you know, like, I mean, TPR is a no bullshit group. They, I mean, they've, they have shut down multiple businesses. Um, so the police end up coming. So the police, the police kick everybody out. And, uh, there ends up being an altercation out front. Like I said, the police end up assaulting one of the TPR members. And while we're in here filming, you know, the, uh... The, uh, you know, very stereotypical fucking truck driver people and their pickup trucks, right? So they come driving around with their fucking Blue Lives Matter flags and Confederate flags and, like, there's a whole group of them, a big, big group of them and they're circling the fucking school trying to, you know, trying to intimidate the group. So this is like when TPR was like pretty full force. Um, you know, obviously my screen is just showing, you know, uh, there's a decent amount of people, but, you know, to the left of this, there's a, still a whole fuck ton of people. So all this stuff in the background here, these vehicles, this, this is like these racist fucks coming out. And like they're everywhere, uh, driving around the perimeter of, of this school.
Don't put your fucking hands on him!
So, yeah, so that's that. So that, I mean, this happened, um, I don't know, I uploaded this because I originally filmed this on, on Facebook, so I don't remember the exact date. Um, the date on YouTube is wrong. It's, I uploaded it to YouTube on March tenth, but this happened in, uh, 2020. Um, so, you know, that, that's kind of what happened. And then, like I said earlier on in the stream, they end up shutting down, you know, the school board meetings. Um, and then they started holding them in secret and it's been a nightmare. Um, so, and they're, they're finally starting to allow people to, to come back in. Uh, tonight, it was said because of the presentation that was going on tonight that the We the Parents group were gonna show up and they were gonna shut it down because they didn't want to hear any of the, any of the shit that was, that was gonna be said today. Um, so that, that's why I livestreamed it. Uh, it's kind of an hour away from where I'm at. I didn't obviously have time to get there filming the, uh, Edge Cone Trial and I was told it started at six and then we tried to go live at six and then found out it was really at seven, so. Um, yeah, you know, it's, they don't really, um... yeah you know it's they don't really um so so like that's the thing here in Wisconsin right like obviously when it comes to the first amendment there's time place and manner restrictions um but I don't know I guess it's not only Wisconsin it's everywhere like they don't they're not really enforcing that time place and manner thing unless at least here um unless it's a very very small group of people um but yeah I mean that's one thing that I've noticed a lot of um that there is a lot of violations when it comes to the protests uh on both sides when it comes to time place and manner um restrictions and um even you know places that you think are public forum and they're actually not uh so you know that that's one thing that I've that I've observed a lot um you know and then there's there's the whole thing where you know I mean being a a live streamer you know independent journalist or or even mainstream media uh you know obviously if you're out in public you have the right to film uh in public uh from a public easement um anything that you can see with your eye um and you know I kinda wrote an article about this in the early days uh cuz I was getting a lot of shit for turning the camera um so even though there's these you know obviously laws and constitutional rights and and all these things it's kind of a different set of rules when you're out there you know and then I mean it's even a a different set of rules too when you know with streamers going to other cities that you're not even from other states you know it's kind of one of those things where like the unwritten rule is you you contact a local streamer out there um to you know get permission from them to come out and then they introduce you to the you know leadership of whatever organizations are out there you introduce yourself tell them who you are you ask permission to film you know let them understand that what the protest rules are and then you kinda ask them like do you have any specific rules that I need to adhere by um and I know that sounds stupid because again you know you're out in public you have the right to film um but it's like one of those things where it's just like I don't know people people don't understand that I mean these things can turn fucking violent and and that's both groups I've filmed both groups where it has turned violent because of fucking filming issues and you know whatever but yeah it's kind of this weird and so he you know going back to your question with like constitutionality of it it's even like the police understand there's a completely different set of rules and you know like when we were live the other night like I was showing you guys that one that one fifteen page document of WhatsApp text messages where law enforcement you know they send the text message that specifically says we were instructed to use any force necessary if they breach this fence um and then there's other messages text messages about this is fucking boring when when do we like get into the shit you know what I mean like we wanna fucking brawl um so it's like law enforcement understands too that they're they're gonna try to uphold the law but they don't really give a fuck about the law that's just like their extra tool they're kind of adhering to their own set of rules in this kind of protest world umbrella it's it's really it's really this crazy dynamic and that's why I like if you know if I ever write my book like like that's one of the things I really wanna talk about because like as this you know like I'm I'm live streaming or just even pre-recording things or just you know sometimes I'm out there and I don't even record um but if I am recording or any streamer that's across the country whatever like you're just seeing what's on the screen but there's this whole fucking weird dynamic that's that's part of all this that you know i- is not really seen by by the viewer um and you know going to hundreds of protests it's it's different things that I've that I've picked up on you know like I said that the police have their own set of fucking rules too um so it's just this weird this weird protest world um you know fucking war it's it's like remember back in the in the old days with with the military and they would line up you know and then they would fucking face each other and shoot the fucking gun and then you know eventually you know some of the uh the the militia were like why are we fucking doing this like let's start ambushing people and and whatever right so it it's just like this these rules of of fucking combat and and both sides have their own set of rules that don't me- mesh with the other fucking sides rules and uh and then the streamer gets thrown in there and then there's a fucking set of rules that they're having to follow and um it it all sides everybody all types of parties involved uh you know the streamer is gonna be a bit more viewed friendlier to the crowd you know as long as it's not like an enemy streamer um but the streamer is gonna be you know viewed as more friendly to the to the group than fucking mainstream media camera guy so yeah it's just this weird fucking dynamic it's it's crazy but uh but yeah and I you know I paused it kind of on a bad fucking picture but um that's a good one right on the fucking cops but like this is an example uh you know I I made a comment the other night too about these kind of volatile situations and you know gunshots and and walking towards fucking gunshots um and walking towards these violent encounters and and being in the middle of these fucking violent encounters like I was literally standing in the middle of this um I was so concerned about the police brutality element of what the fuck happened um and I didn't catch all of it on my camera cuz my camera's facing one way my head is doing a fucking three sixty um but you know they're getting assaulted here at this point and it you know it's it's one of those things like if you look at it objectively you know you remove yourself from you know this is kind of my world that I'm in and I've been with these people for a very long time at this point if you look at it objectively like I mean they're swarming the cops and the cops end up pushing them back um but the one cop like I said actually assaulted th- this female protester um and then they had the they they start rushing the the police so it's one of those examples where I got so focused on the police brutality element of it and disregarded my safety and this could have been a situation of people getting trampled uh law enforcement pulling guns out and just opening fire on the crowd um and then you know not only them but me getting fucking struck so it's like that's why I'm saying it's like this it's really this whole it's really this whole fucking um weird just absolutely fucking weird dynamic it's it's really it's really insane so yeah that was just you know a little background uh a little background info for you on why I filmed this uh this board meeting today so this is I mean again you know we're talking I don't know October September October maybe of twenty twenty and this is this is literally right now we're in fucking January the end of January going into February of twenty twenty two and that incident that I was just playing for you guys this is now finally being talked about January twenty fourth two thousand twenty two so it's just it's it's crazy and that's not even a critical race theory fucking thing it's it's trying to explore um their their fucking policies when it comes to bullying and and all that so I just I I just think it's fucking crazy I've been following this since then um we've been waiting for it to open there were a few times that it did open where um they intentionally did not talk about these things it wasn't on the agenda uh so none of the protesters were showing up because this issue right here was not being talked about they waited for so long so and then tonight like I said it was just it was last minute when I found out about it and um I couldn't get there and uh we were just told that uh that we the parents were gonna fucking show up to shut it down to prevent that whole speech and all that shit all them slides and all that from from happening yeah and that's how like you know from what I've seen kinda looking at some other school boards um for certain places in particular that I was personally kind of concerned with uh yeah all the ones that I've looked at they're they're all like this I mean it's a fucking it's an absolute mess is it all just picking up again I mean as far as this particular school district Burlington you know a year and a half later they're finally addressing what happened a fucking year and a half ago so you know I mean compared to when I when I was out there constantly fucking filming like literally every single day um you know the group that was in this video TPR uh you know they marched um they marched over a year of um you know protesting and demonstrate every day was a day of action for them um so things have slowed down with them obviously Kenosha has really slowed down um on protest um so yeah out in my area it's kinda like things have slowed down but there's other other things kinda going on uh and then obviously we have the the edge cone case um which this group that I've started filming recently again um this Milwaukee Alliance Against Racism and um I don't know oppression or whatever it's called um they they've been kind of bad that you know they're they're another group like TPR um little bit more you know peaceful uh not that TPR is not peaceful but um it's a bit more passive is a better word uh but they've they've been active they've been doing their things um I don't film them much because they talk about a lot of Marxist stuff they talk about a lot of socialism some communist things um I don't I don't really film a lot of them uh but yeah kind of from the Rittenhouse trial transfer over to Theo Edgecombe self-defense I've kinda picked up on this group and um following this trial a bit more yeah well you know and that's the thing is like TPR out here in Milwaukee like TPR didn't give a fuck we we marched in the in the rain we marched in fucking negative weather um and you know I mean they didn't they there with the snow on the ground there's a lot of video I mean there's dozens and dozens and dozens of videos that I ended up losing when uh when I lost that fucking Facebook page dozens and dozens of fucking marches and and things um you know there's a video on here I mean TPR went on the highway uh and shut the highway down and that's not the first time they've done that um there's you know a lot of the names that like you hear chanted in the streets there's quite a bit of those names that happened here in Wisconsin it's quite a bit um so that's been that's been an issue um when the Palestine and um Israeli thing fucking kicked off again there was a massive massive I mean there were fucking hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of of Palestinians that came out into the streets I went and filmed one of those this video over here this justice for Jasfor Evans so this um college student black female is out in Illinois she uh her and her girlfriends went to uh this local bar uh the owner was like super white supremacist like like full on not just you know I'm I'm saying like oh this dude's racist like this dude was fucking full on like motherfucker um and he ended up fucking picking her up and beating the fuck out of her um so we ended up driving down uh for this event um this event though was kind of interesting where the there were several of the police that actually marched with the group including the chief of police um so that was something that was seriously interesting um some of the cops though that were out there you know they're wearing the blue lives matter fucking bracelets and and whatever um but uh but yeah like the chief of police marched with the group um so it's kinda like those staged those weird staged fucking videos that uh that you'd see early on in the in the protest with the police kneeling and all that fucking fake nonsense uh this was actually real and then afterwards the chief stayed for quite a while talking to um talking to protesters and um and examining some of their practices and taking suggestions um he didn't know like the history behind the the blue line uh him and I had a conversation so yeah it was kind of uh it was definitely kind of uh an interesting interesting thing to see I was trying to find oh like this one this is a two hundred day TPR um reached their two hundredth consecutive day marching this was thi- this was cold as fuck out here it was it was freezing so this is I mean this is when you know I mean you'd get a couple hundred fucking people marching out here in uh in Milwaukee these were like I don't know these were like my favorite times being out here filming this so yeah like there's that and then you know we went to some fucking crazy you know crazy fucking Trump rallies and shit this was a so this event this event here like you know we ended up attending a couple of the stop the steal fucking events and um this event uh the former Milwaukee sheriff David Clark thi- this guy's a fucking real winner too um he kinda led this whole thing uh there was the you know covid mandates that were going around and like when people were out in this like kinda public setting um like they had booked this banquet hall people had to sit in their chairs they had to have their masks on and that was like straight from the health department and they ended up uh violating that and the health department came out and told the banquet person like hey you gotta get this shit in order otherwise like we're gonna shut this event down um and Sheriff Clark gets up on the fucking loudspeaker and he's basically like yeah fuck that um and and that's recorded I clipped that that that's up on the thing so you can get his exact the exact verbiage Um, and, and that's recorded, I clipped that, tha- that's up on the thing, so you can get his exact, the exact verbiage. Uh, but he's like, yeah, fuck that. And then he encourages the Trump people. Literally, he incited violence and told them to fucking like attack this guy. And that's exactly what happened, they attacked the guy, he ends up getting knocked down. Um, and then a couple of weeks later, he, he ends up getting COVID from this fucking event and he's already got some underlying issues and, uh, he ended up fucking dying a couple of weeks after this fucking event. But this event's like, the dude that just walked past the screen in the black, Sean, he's one of, he's one of the independent photographers. And, uh, like we show up together and like as we're walking up, I'm telling him, I'm like, I'm like, bro, you probably don't want to fucking stand next to me. Um, and, uh, he's like, why is that? And I'm like, cause it's just fucking, it's gonna be dangerous for you, like these people don't like me. And like sure as shit, like as we're walking up, people start fucking with me. And, uh, and Sean just kind of looked at me and he, he's like, yeah, later, bro. And he fucking, that dude right there, and he fucking like, he ends up leaving me. Um, but he's like, he films me a lot from like within the crowd. Uh, but yeah, I had, like, this is one of those things where it's like, I come to these and they, they know who I am. You know, and then they start taking pictures or screenshotting and live streaming my fucking press credentials and, um, this event, I got physically assaulted, I was getting hit with fucking flagpoles. Um, people were like accusing me of hating the American flag and shit. Uh, and what they, what they ended up doing at this event. So like, that part, where's your mask? All these Trump people, they have no masks on and they're yelling at the, at TPR about where's your fucking masks? And like a lot of TPR had fucking masks on. And I was like, I, I tried, I interviewed a couple of people and I'm like, you know, you're yelling at them about masks, like, but you don't have a mask on. And he's like, yeah, cause I'm a human being. And I'm like, did you just suggest that they're not human beings? So it was like this, this kind of weird, this weird thing, um, so I ended up getting hit with flagpoles. Uh, one guy came up to me and this is kind of typical with these events that I would show up to. They'd be like rubbing their asses on me, rubbing their dicks on me, the, you know, the guy's like rubbing himself on me, he's like, do you wanna fuck me, bro? And, um, so that was interesting, uh, they tried to knock the camera out of my hand a couple of times. Um, so there was some argument about that. Uh, but they, what they ended up doing is they, they took these flagpoles and they started hitting TPR with them, like beating them with the fucking flagpoles and, uh, there ends up being a confrontation and then they start crying and yelling for the police to come help them. And the police are like, no, we're not fucking helping you. And then they, they fucking turn on the cops and they're like, you know, fuck the police and all this crazy shit. Um, prior to this part, on the other side of this building, there was a fistfight. And one of the Trump people got severely fucked up. One of our TPR people got his fucking nose broken. But it's like, I mean, this is where I'm saying like TPR is a no bullshit group, right? So I mean, you had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of these Trump supporters and you probably had thirty fucking TPR members that came out. And they, they, they shut downed events that had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of fucking Trump people, they, they shut the event down. And, and what's weird is tha- that's almost the wrong, the wrong verbiage because they, they literally stood on the sidewalk and kind of said nothing. And once like the Trump supporters noticed them, and again, they're not yelling anything, they're just standing there. And once the Trump supporters noticed them, now all of the attention is on TPR. And then, and then it becomes, you know, the, the counter protest and, and whatever, uh. See, I was crazy. This part right here, like in this video, um, it's thirty-four minutes and fifty seconds into this video. This is one of those things where you have two opposing viewpoints and here's the opportunity for them to communicate. And in this particular situation, this white guy that's standing here, he's a, obviously, he's a Trump supporter. It's him and his wife. And they were very calm and they were trying to talk to this, this black gentleman that's off screen right now. They're trying to talk to him and he's just screaming at them and being dismissive and being rude and the guy's like, you know, look, man, I'm actually trying to talk to you and have a conversation and hear what you're trying to say, but if you're just gonna keep fucking screaming at me, like, why am I gonna engage in this? Um, so I stood there for a little bit and then, I mean, this is one of those moments I talk about where I just, I shake my fucking head and roll my eyes and then I walk away. Cause it's like, fuck, man. Like this was one of those moments where the conversation needed to fucking happen and, you know, we fucked it up, so. I don't know, it's just fucking, it's crazy. Uh, yeah, but you, no, you're exactly right. As soon as they started enforcing all that shit, yep, they definitely fucking changed their tune when it came to, to law enforcement. But yeah, there were quite a few different things that I filmed where the, the opposing side fucking started something, got aggressive, it got physical. Um, and then they went and tried to, you know, cry to the fucking police and the police were like, we're not fucking helping you, you actually started this. So. And then, you know, and then they turned on the fucking police. And what was kind of comical with this event too is that, you know, the, all these people are sitting here and they're pissing and moaning about protesters blocking traffic and um, all this shit, so they end up, they literally ended up fucking going in the middle of the, the middle of the street. And fucking and, uh, eh, right, like right here, and, and blocking traffic. They, they stood there and, and blocked traffic. So everything that they were pissing and moaning that protesters do, they, they did the exact same thing. And like questioning them, um, you know, it was totally fine that they did that. There's a article on my website that came from this event, it's called One Girl's Dream. Where I talked to, you know, the Trump supporting family about their, their daughter's future. And it was just a very beautiful fucking moment that, that happened from that, so I don't know if you're interested in reading that article. It's on the website, it's called One Girl's Dream. But yeah, anyway, kind of sidetracked from the, uh, the board meeting, whatever, but, um, but yeah, there's, there's tons of stuff on here, so. That's, uh, that's kind of that. Um, so yeah, obviously, you know, tomorrow, uh, tomorrow morning, we'll be here for the Edgecombe trial again. Uh, so make sure you tune in for that, uh, it's supposed to be the last day and then, uh, it sounds like jury is gonna be sent to deliberate. Uh, the way this trial is going, I do not foresee them being back there for a, a long time. Um, Edgecombe is, is supposed to be testifying tomorrow. Uh, so that's gonna be interesting, uh, basically his life rests in his fucking hands at this point, so. Uh, but yeah, so, you know, I'll be here, I'll start monitoring at, you know, eight o'clock, um, waiting for the feed to pop up and, uh, so yeah, make sure you guys are here for that, if, uh, if you wanna join that, so. Yeah, you know, well, here's the thing with that too, and I'll, I'll kind of end on this, um, a lot of that with the, the ambulances and fire trucks and things, you know, a lot of that, that people saw through live streams and, and all these things, uh, with ambulances and fire trucks coming through, there was a very, 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 very small percentage of fire trucks and ambulances that were genuinely actually trying to get to some type of, you know, uh, incident. Um, we saw through open records requests and then, and then just literally being out there filming, uh, situations where, one tactic that law enforcement would try to do is they would send an ambulance intentionally, uh, down the road where protesters were coming. And, uh, just to be able to send them, uh, ridiculous dollar amount tickets, for blocking an emergency vehicle. Uh, and, and then again, like I said, through open records requests, we saw that there was communication um, of them actually doing this. So, uh, you know, I don't know, all the other states, cause I'm, I wasn't out there, I didn't film. But with other journalists that I've talked to, uh, they were seeing very similar patterns and, and things happening out there. There's some open records requests from some other cities, uh, that they were covering. That they exposed that type of stuff as well. Um, you know, one thing here, like in Milwaukee, like with TPR, when they would protest, um, the, uh, the transit authority, uh, for like the buses and everything, they would end up rerouting the buses and the transit authority would end up, um, kind of following the protest so that they could orchestrate traffic and, and all of that. So it kind of became like in the beginning of TPR, it was this massive push-pull with, with the police. And, uh, and then there was this understanding of, look, we're just gonna fucking be out here doing this and you're just gonna deal with it, so, you know, let's do this constructively. So yeah, they, you know, they would reroute the buses and, and all that shit. Uh, one bus from an event that I filmed, one bus actually tried driving through the fucking crowd. Like literally driving through the fucking crowd. And, uh, obviously the bus got stopped, um, transit authority was fucking right there, so they saw it. And, uh, and that dude got in some serious fucking shit. So. So yeah, um, but yeah, that, that kind of became the whole fucking thing, right? Is all, well, you know, you're blocking streets and you're blocking emergency vehicles and if my mom's in the back of that ambulance and she fucking dies over a protest, and then, you know, we find out that that stuff was, that stuff was fake anyway, and it was orchestrated by law enforcement to intentionally send an empty ambulance. So, anywho. Uh, all right, like I said, before I get on all these tangents and go off, uh, topic of what the stream was, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end it here, I got a big, you know what, I'm not gonna be able to stream the fucking trial tomorrow. I just thought about that, I'm not gonna be able to stream the trial tomorrow. I have, uh, I have a legal obligation tomorrow morning. God damn it. God damn it. Uh, so yeah, I, you know, I don't know, I guess check out my boy Lockhart Media, um, that's my fucking guy. Uh, check out his stream tomorrow, so I'm not gonna be able to stream it. So when I get home, I'll probably, uh, I'll probably end up watching it and then, uh, I'll probably end up just streaming his stream, just so I have the fucking, uh, just so I have the entire trial on, on my platform, but, um, yeah, fuck dude, I'm not gonna be able to stream. Anyway, all right, well, I got my own legal issues to deal with, so. That's that, uh, I'll catch you guys. Catch you guys fucking later, I guess. Um, WTD, if you wanna like, if you ever need to get ahold of me or whatever, shoot me an email, neverstopvoices@gmail.com. Um, or I don't know, fucking if you have Instagram, you can message me there. So, I will chat with you guys later. Have a good one.